All right. So on behalf of the Franklin City Council, I will call the Joint Workshop of Franklin City Council and Franklin City Public Schools.
Good evening. After everyone knows me, this is my name, Phillips, Chair of Franklin City School Board. And I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. And I called this joint session of Franklin City School Board along with City Council's Board. Thank you all for being here.
All right. Thank you again for calling the meeting to order. We are ready for it. And Ms. Phillips, today, tonight, we're going to have our joint session, our first one that we usually have every year. We usually have a joint session and we follow up with our final recommendations. But tonight, we're going to go over several aspects of our finances. But before we begin, because we have not met jointly, I want to go over, I want the personnel, the executive personnel from Franklin City Public Schools, so please introduce themselves. Again, Mr. Smith, I don't think we've formally met either. I am Dr. Tamara Sterling, the Superintendent of School. So we'll start this way.
Good evening. Dr. Carlson, partner, Assistant Superintendent for Calligraphy and Personnel.
Good evening. Dr. Natalie Halloran, Assistant Superintendent of Public Programs and Human Resource.
Good evening. Felicia Burkholder, Chief Academic Officer for Franklin City Public Schools.
Monica Murphy, Deputy Director of Workforce Counsel for Franklin City Public Schools.
Tammy Moore, Executive Assistant and Board Director.
And that brings us to me, Jeff Ryder, Assistant Superintendent for Operations and Finance.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. And of course, our wonderful board members that you all have appointed us some short ago. Who's taking on? Without further ado, we're going to move to our joint session, our special with Mr. Jeff Ryder leading the conversation. So we'll turn this over to Mr. Ryder.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Sterling. The first presentation we're going to make tonight is regarding the Coronavirus Aid and Relief Economic Security Act, or Federal Government's CARES. The CARES Act, pardon me, is seemingly redundant on some of these things because I'm not sure of the experience level of all the folks in the room. So some of this stuff might be fairly basic, others might be very different sometimes or so. The CARES Act is a series of funding measures enacted by the federal government in 2020 to alleviate the tremendous burdens on all sectors of the economy due to the coronavirus for Franklin City Public Schools. We were notified three separate times of funding that was coming our way. For this reason, we had to kind of separate it into revenue stream one, two, and three. Okay, so there's three different CARES Act side acts. So stream one, we were notified in March, that was the largest of the three, it was about $617,000. For those of you who are not familiar with federal reimbursement, it's a reimbursement grant, which means we have to spend the money first and then ask for them to pay us back later. Stream number two, $87,000, same thing. We have to spend it first and then ask for it later. Something was really different this time. Stream three, oddly enough, stream three, we were notified in October, as late as October, that we were even receiving the money, and it was going to be a prepaid grant. Because the first time, they're going to actually give us the money, then we have to spend it. And we just were notified, we have until January 15th to do the reports on how we spent it. The federal government has very strict rules and items that we are supposed to purchase with this money. So in case you were wondering, yes, stream three was the last grant that we were notified of, but we have to spend it first. And we have to spend all that money between October 9th and December 31st. So literally, the clock is ticking. We have until December 31st to spend that money this year. The other two grants, we have until September of 2022. This grant, we had to spend between then and December 31st of this year. So what do these grants pay for? Each one of them has a whole list of things that they want you to spend it on. But it's basically anything COVID-related that would not have to be purchased or somebody hired had it not been for the pandemic. So that is why these funds are for things that we would, for expenses we would incur that we would not ordinarily incur in a given year. And so for that reason, we cannot use these federal dollars for these CARES money, or Title I, or II, or III, or V. We can't use any of that stuff for anything but specifically what they tell us. If we do use that, it's called supplanting. It's taking the, right, the local and state dollars, relieving them of that burden using federal dollars to do that. It's completely illegal. You can't do that. So that's why these grants are for specific, specific things and only because of the pandemic, the CARES. So streams one and two were approved by the board at their regular meeting on August 6th, their regular meeting on August 6th. And here are some of the things that, you know, kind of say that we can spend it on. Virtual coordinators, PPE, a lot of PPE, personal protective equipment, a lot of technology. In order for children or our students to learn virtually from home, you know, if they didn't have laptops, they could have blind laptops. Then the second is, it was a cascade of problems. Now they got the laptop, but they don't have the Wi-Fi. So now we have to put hotspots all over the city. So it was a whole chain reaction of things that the coronavirus act actually was, you know, quite astute in thinking, prethinking what we would need, and they, you know, allowed the money for us. They gave us, they gave all people that have the CARES Act quite a bit of leeway to move in between these things. Found we didn't need a particular position, we could use it for personal protective equipment. If we didn't need that technology, we hired someone. So there's a lot of leeway inside the grant, but overall, the grant is for pandemic-related expenses. Stream two, go ahead. Stream two. I'm sorry. So this is stream, oh, stream one and two, this was the approval process for the two streams. But on the next slide is the, you know, specifically stream two. Now, this was interesting in that stream two, remember, this is pandemic. And even the federal government was trying to figure out what we're all doing. So we, we asked for a lot of dollars that we thought we would need and the type of funds we wanted to spend it on. But then, I mean, we asked for over $800,000 and they gave back, it's a duty of $87,000. And so, stream two, again, that, we have until 2022 to spend that. So the priority in the order is we're going to spend stream three first. That'll be done in about three weeks. Then we're going to be starting on stream one, and then we're going to start on stream two. It's a linear. So again, but this is division actually received in cash, zero, zero, and the full $177,958 for stream three. We'll see that in the number. So this is just the boring accounting stuff, all the account numbers, kind of the things we're going to be spending it on. So here's the grant, $1617,000. We have, we actually have spent about $25,000 and we've, we've incurred about $30,000. So we still have about $562,000 to go on stream one. And then in stream two, we spent nothing. It's all set up in our budget. We haven't spent anything, so it's still waiting to be paid. And then on the next one is stream three, and, you know, we are, we're well on our way. That's got to be zero by December 31st. And I just approved about $18,000 PPE supply purchasers, so that's cut to half even as we stream. I'm updating that on a weekly basis, actually. After the next payroll, which is a lot of it's payroll, so I'll be updating that. And then, and then while we're on break, I'm going to have to update it again. So that is the CARES Act funding for Franklin City Public Schools. And so we can open it up to questions?
Excuse me, y'all. For odd. And then maybe also CARES Act money can be spent differently, but... Were these, some of these positions, were they in the budget?
No, not all of these positions were, have been added since, like, a lot of them are guidance counselors for, like, the psychological wellbeing.
So these are for those two-year terms or three-year?
Yeah, two-year terms, yes.
And so you got to spend this money that you don't have. Where do you get the money?
Well...
To reimburse it. I mean, you got to spend it to be reimbursed, but where is that money coming from?
Right. Like, as with all of our grants, we have to, we have to spend it, you know, leave the expenditures. And then we do quarterly expenditure reports. So for a quarter, we have to kind of front, we have to front the money, and then they reimburse us.
I guess what I'm asking is what pocket of money is fronted, is fronted from?
Well, it's from the general fund, which is a combination called state.
All, all state, local, and federal money?
Exactly.
Okay.
Thanks. So do these include the Solterra grants? For what grants? Solterra? Oh, no. The overseas is totally separate.
Travis, come work real quick.
If there are no further questions, then we will move on to the next section. Budget adjustments or the journal entries. So these, so... Throughout the school year, could you spell it out? Throughout the school year, I'll have it. So throughout the school year, we, we, we apply for grants from the federal government. Title I is the biggest one, two, three. And these, these grants pay for different things. Title I, Title I. And so what we do is we, we ask for the money sometime, I'm not sure, in an arbitrage or something. And then it takes the federal government months and months and months to figure out what they're going to give us. And then once they approve it, but in between that time, I and Trac, we won't have to make budgets. We have to create budgets. And so as long as our budgets are in balance, at zero was bottom line, we're okay. So then, when the year starts and the grant, if we ask for $800 and they give us $900,000, I have to tell the city, we've received another hundred. So you on the city, see, the city and the school division have to have mirrored financial statements. They have to be in balance all the time. And the city has a lot less deal to detail than we do. We have, you know, over 1,200 general ledger numbers that extends down to about five line items of expense. So every month, we have to be in balance. So if we, once a federal grant says, yes, here it is, we have to adjust our budget. We have to increase the $100,000 and the expense a hundred. And I have to tell the city the same thing, and then they, they have to take it to their city council because they're changing something that was already adopted. That's kind of a big deal. So we have to change the budget. And that's called a, you know, appropriation adjustment. So, so, you know, whenever we get these things, and I send about maybe one a month over to the city. And I let them know, it's basically an accounting acknowledgement. We have, we've changed our records, we have to change your records, or we're going to be out of balance. I get nasty phone calls when that happens. So this is the CARES, see, there's the CARES Act, there's, there's stream three. So I think this was in November. So the federal government said, here's your check, increase your revenue, increase your expenses, and get spending. And then there's a couple of other ones, Title I, you know, have a little bit of change. And then, so what we do, sometimes you get a little count, you increase the revenues and you increase the expenditures. And sometimes the, this must be the city. I would never put them up though. There's ours, okay. And then this here was Medicaid, and we had to move the expense from the general fund to Medicaid fund. It's just a budgetary oversight on my part, I still do the budgeting. And here. Title I, Title I, federal whatever it is called, it's a hidden code, it just shows up. You got $154,000, figure out what to spend it on. Title IV, $69,000. And remember, these figures are either, if they're over and above what we put in our budget. It's, it's over and above what we put in our budget. So if you see brackets, that means they've given us less than what they're, they're figuring. But at least they're always in balance. And the overseas grant, I actually had this, you know, treated like a, a grant this year because they, they went from one to three different streams of funding. And so, and that's the total of three streams. And then stream two was cut by $940,000. Okay. And so that's what these are, you know, for, for anyone that, you know, because I think this was tabled at the last city council meeting. But, you know, and I think the question was, you know, what are we approving? Well, you're approving the budget to be changed in accordance with both sets of records. And so, so that's what, when you say, when you're approving the appropriation adjustment, this is what you're approving, you're approving an appropriate change. Any questions on that?
Um, I'm sorry, another question. Uh, what was that, Ray? When, uh, you receive money from time to time, so does that time that, uh, the state or federal government can spend money to put schools in? Is that correct?
So what I'm asking is, my point is, money can come to the schools at any time if the federal, state government chooses to send extra money, just like, uh, we did, uh, with the jail board. We had, we gave them moments of $1,000. Then the state turns around and gave them, uh, sent us money to give them $500. We, we knew nothing about that, but the money came. So the money had, had to be balanced, there was no money out of our budget, the jail budget. So basically, you can give it to the boys for morale. So basically, what I'm saying is, money can come in at any time, like that.
Absolutely. And it does.
And you would have no way of knowing that, right?
Right.
Okay. That's my point.
All right.
One of the questions that may have come up that I've asked is sometimes there's general interest when it comes to the CARES funding. Do you have a big move?
Hey, hey, speak up.
Speak up, I'm sorry. That are moved from the, um, normal budget items. Like, we had one that came in with the, the budget adjustment. And this was called Notice of Adjustment to Actual Figures. So it was like $62,000 moved from instruction down to your CARES. And they just went on verification that that was actually for new positions. You had actually been paying the individuals out of the instruction line, but that was actually for new positions. That was with, that was funded by CARES, whether it was for, I guess, the virtual coordinators or guidance, is that correct?
Right. Yes.
And also, some administration, $11,000 in administration, $3,000 in transportation, $20,000 operation maintenance, and $20,000 technology. But that was actually just expenditures that you prepaid in anticipation of receiving these funds, because you have the new funds.
Exactly. Right. All right. If there are no further questions, we will move on to the, the audit results for fiscal year 2020. All right, so, some basics. The fiscal year starts on, both custody and the school division starts on July 1st and ends on July, by June 30th every year. It's important to know, a little bit of, I'm going to be going through a little bit of structure tonight. So for, for new board members, new administrators, and new council members, it's kind of interesting to know what the structure of these two entities are and how they interact. And so what's important to know is that the school division is a component unit of the city in Franklin City. And so when I'm referring to the audit, or this audit, what I'm referring to is the audit of the city's financial statements, of which we are a part of. Our financial data all rolls into their consolidated, comprehensive annual financial report, or CAFR. And so in the CAFR, I refer to it as the CAFR, that's the annual financial. The school division's audit of the results, and they audit us in the city and they combine them. And we are presented as something called a discreetly presented component unit. And so the city council, I believe they received and approved their, they have to approve, received, I think, of the CAFR, if they remember, the 23rd council. Okay, okay. So, um, the city, the financial report for the, it's a 246 pages, so it's a, it's a very, a fairly large document. And that's, that, because that is a, that's a format and structure that's actually used throughout the entire United States. You can find CAFRs in Texas, in Washington State, Illinois. And so it's kind of like a standard, general thing so that bond grading companies can, you know, compare, great municipalities can compare them. So what I did was, for this year, I took the, the actual, the financial portions that relate to the school division and I, I, out of the CAFR, out of the city's CAFR, and I placed them up here. So our balance sheet is down on page 164. Our, our financials, 164, 5, and 6 are the city's CAFR. And here it is, now you'll see, this is quite, this is quite common. The cities, the city has a, a school operating fund. And that has all of our, our general fund and all of our grants, and everything rolls into that column. But the city and the school division always separates cafeteria and the textbook. The cafeteria and textbooks are always separate, you know, they're literally separate funds unto themselves. They have their own balance sheet section, they have their revenue, on expenses, on payroll, everything. And so, and this is the, and so this is the discreetly presented component unit of the school board, and this is the balance sheet. Okay. So this next one is, as you can see, there's that, that standard structure again. Operator fund, cafeteria, textbook, it just shows you the revenues and the breakdown. Five million from the city, eight and a half from the state, and about a million five from federal. You'll see most of your cafeteria fund is federal money because it's a national student program. And then the textbook fund actually comes in the operating, we have to transfer over, not below, of all. And so, so you have these three things, and that adds up to the total of school division over there. And so what we'll do is, here you can see that there's a, a fund balance for the general fund, for the operating fund for the school, it started with $653,000, it went up about 50, 60. And I'll, I'll address that later, what makes that up, what we're talking about there. So the operating fund only, so if you, on the left side, that guy all the way over to the left, this is a kind of little breakdown. And this is what happens, see, you, you, you adopt an original budget in May. And then throughout the year, we have, you know, numerous, numerous adjustments that we have to account for. And so it starts out as one thing, it ends up at another, but then the actual results is this column here. And there's your variance. And the, the, you know, the thing that jumps off the page is, why is the revenue down so high? Why is the expense up so high? The variance is that's just because of the grants. You know, that million two, you know, shortfall in revenue is, we, we thought we were going to get the grant revenue, and we don't. But remember, it's reimbursement, so if we didn't spend it, we don't get it. And, and that rolls over into the next year. All of our grants have three years that are rolling constantly. And we have 15 to 16 grants. So we have 15 times three, that's many information, it's tricky to track at all times. But this is the, ends up here. Okay. And so I want to show this slide for mine and Tracy's benefit that this is what's called a clean audit. There are no, there are no deficiencies, there's no audit deficiencies, there's no internal control problems. The auditorium's found nothing out of the ordinary or, you know, worth mentioning. Have a corrections plan for every place. And so, getting back to the balance sheet a little bit. In Franklin City, last year, fiscal year 2020, you know, so this is just a standard report too. It depends on what we spend money on. Last year, we spent about $1.2 million in fixed assets. And what made that up was, we had, well, first of all, we had $335,000 granted to us in rollover funds from the city. And so, you know, we spent that on fixed assets. That's the middle part there. We did about $368,000 in building improvements. A list, almost a long list of things. The band and athletic equipment for all three schools. We did vehicle replacements. Back in 2017, the division issued a vehicle replacement schedule. So we have buses, and everyone was dying as, as each day was by. So eventually, they had to be replaced, and the auto wheels. Well, in 2020, we just had more, you know, vehicles fail than we had. There were no buses, but we had, we actually replaced almost all of the vehicles that needed to be replaced. And so, so that was that. And then we also, we purchased three activity buses. Those are those white buses that are delivering all the wheels to the kids. A lot cheaper than driving our big yellow buses around. And A, B, you don't need a CDL license to drive them. And C, once the, the pandemic will end sooner or later, and once it does, when it does, we'll be able to use those buses, a couple of really good reasons. One, a lot of sports programs are smaller, you don't need the great big yellow bus. You don't need the CDL driver to drive them. In case I haven't made myself clear on CDL drivers, they're very hard to come by these days, bus drivers. So that's a, that's a problem plaguing almost every school division in Virginia. So it's a very good thing that we got those buses. And I, I sent this to the mayor and the city manager back in May, I think. I think they'd asked, you know, so, we gave you $335,000 rollover, what did you spend it on? It's up there, it is, it's, there's a whole bunch of stuff. We actually, yeah, we, bus repair, a transmission replacement, a magnets van, a whole bunch of computers on a one-to-one initiative. Glad we did that. The pandemic came along a few months later, and kids really needed those, laptop replacements. So this is, this is just a schedule that I created months ago. Okay, so that, that is the fiscal year 2020 audit. Our information's presented with the city's CAFR, if anybody wants to page through the report to read it. So now I look forward to any questions, anyone like that. All right. Well, if there are no questions, then I will move on to the, I believe, the final presentation. The rollover grants. So, um, the appropriations that a city or a county affords a school division is based on our best estimate of the budget. is based on our best estimate of the budget at the time that the budget is adopted. Nobody ever comes in exactly on budget, and you're either going to be a little over or a little under. And so at the end of the year, so the additional revenue that, you know, that might be in the school division's column, is, is referred to as a reversion, because we would hope that that would revert back to the school division at the end of the year. It depends on the relationship and, you know, the financial resources of both the city and the school division. But, you know, bear in mind that the appropriations provide the authority for the school division to spend money. If the city appropriates $100, we can't spend 105, it's 100, that's it. If we spend, if we only have $95 in expenses, spend 95, and that's it. So, so that's how the, that's kind of like the structure of the appropriations, appropriation relationship between the city and the school division. All right, so what I wanted to show everyone tonight, is like I told you earlier, we have to have mirror financial statements, but ours look kind of different than the city's. So I kind of, I have to do this schedule like I did it last year for the first time, but this year is my second time, so I'm not going to let it better. So this is our, all of our different funds. The two at the end, just like the city and the food service and the textbooks, they just stay by themselves. But on the city's books, they take these four, you know, the local grants, the federal grants, Medicaid, and the general fund, and they kind of lump it all together. So on the next slide, you'll see where these blue arrows are pointing to. So this is the city's CAFR, you've already seen this slide. You see how they got the school operating fund? So all of those four funds of ours will fall into this guy here, in this column. So what happened last year in fiscal year 2020 was that we started out with $653,000. Go back to the last slide, if you can. So it's the same, you're going to come down with the same number. We started out with $653,000 of fund balance, but the city appropriated us $335,000 of our rollover balance. It's like the savings come back, they said you can, you can spend that in 2020. And did we, yes we did, we absolutely did. And then, so we spent that, but then, see, we had a $385,000 surplus, and that's, you know, that's not good in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Because you're supposed to be spending all the money that you're, that you're appropriating. So if you take the 653, subtract what we spent on the rollover, and we had a surplus, you come up to the 703,000, and then the city, actually, the 653, they actually gave us $252,000 rollover money for this year. So that leaves $451,000 basically an essential rollover balance that we're requesting, that we're requesting for fiscal year 2020. Theoretically, if we're granted the $451,000 by June 30, if the school division comes right in on budget, and we spent the rollover, it'll be zero. We just start, we start over on July 1st, 2020. So, and then to reconcile it to the city's books, so this is the city's column. The numbers are a little different, but, you know, 653, ended up at 715, if you subtract what they gave us for 2020, that lead. And then the $12,000 is the sum of the restricted funds that are in this column. See, the restricted funds come in here, grants and Medicaid. And so, but it comes down to the same figure. Tracy had sent me an email a couple of weeks ago, it's like, I think it's about $460,000 balance, and sure enough, it's $450,000. And so this is it altogether. So I put on two slides, and I just, you know, because this is kind of probably hard to read for everybody, because they're so small, so, but if you, you know, you got a calculator, and you had all these numbers up, they both come down to the same figure. And it's just a reconciliation between our books and the city, so we both know what rollover figure we're talking about. We can't be referring to two different figures for the same thing. So in anticipation of questions I think might come up, we tried to have some Q and A. So, you know, did the school division actually spend the rollover money? That was granted last year, last year, yes we did. What contributed to the surplus of the $385,000 that netted out to the $49,000? Well, you know, interesting, $385,000 surplus, so one of the things is, you know, you either didn't spend expense, or you had too much revenue. And what happened was, our revenue increased by about $151,000 way late in the year, before we had a chance to spend money. When, well, March 31st, our average daily membership, it's a, it's a, it's a count of our students, kind of. And we give that to the state, and that's what our funding is based on. And so when we tell them on March 31st, this is our ADM, our average daily membership, what they do is they adjust the same revenues that you're receiving in that year, and then they use that to project your next year. So on March 31st of 2020, we had more students than we had told them the year before, March 31st before. And what they did was they, the calculator went up, and, you know, March 31st, or April, or the beginning of May, we're notified, all right, here's the extra dollars you're going to get over the next two payments. And so what happened was, our ADM spiked a little bit, and so we ended up with a positive variance in the revenue side. And then on the instruction expense side, you know, we just didn't, we didn't get to hire as many people as we could. For whatever reason, there's a variety of positions and openings, and they just didn't get hired in time to spend money by December, June, 30. Same thing with the admin, you know, as you can see, the salary and benefits was lower than projected. The O and M was actually higher, due to some expenses we incurred there. Transfer to the textbook was lower than budget, I just budgeted, I just budgeted incorrectly, that's all. And the tech expense was lower, due to the salaries and benefits again, and then the salaries and benefits again. So that's, you know, that's pretty much our operating income statement, if you add them all up, that's where you get the $385,000 variance. Mr. Smith?
According to your appropriation explanation, $385,000 should have been charged in the city, right?
It is, it's sitting in the city's, it is sitting in the city's checking here, back in the slide. See, it's up here. It's inside, it's inside over $51,000.
So it was returned to the city?
Yeah, yeah. It never really left the city.
Oh, never really left the city?
Never left the city. Yes, so this, so what we're asking the city, what we do every year is, we ask the city, will you give that to us in the next fiscal year? We have, that's what this is. Or the rollover request, or unallocated fund balance is what they call it, that's what we, that's what we do.
Thank you.
So then usually, the very next question is, what are you going to spend it on? What do you intend to spend the rollover funds on? What do you want them for? And so, and every year, we, you know, we have this rainstorm to figure out what is it we want this for. So we have a, we have a bathroom replacement project that we're trying to launch, trying to get off the ground. One of the problems is you can't even get it off the ground, you can't even put it out to bid until you pay an architect to, you know, design it, the drawings, permits, all kinds of things. So we got about three or four architects waiting for us to put the RFP out. The alarm system in all of our schools, we have very, very old alarm systems that have been there for decades, and they keep giving false alarms, and they're very problematic. The bell schedule alarms, yeah, it's the same problem. I mean, I was over at the high, I was at the high school just the other day, and she, you know, opened the door, and the creaky door opens, and there's great big switches, like, this looks like something from NASA, this is your bell signal? Yeah, and when the power goes off, I have to reprogram every single bell schedule. Every start time, every minute for four schedules, every time the power goes off. And I walk about in the hallway, and every clock is different. Cat, I'm going to work it, this little power, we have to go. Focus on two. No, see, so all these clocks, inside this thing here, would be all digital clocks, just like everybody's watch in here is the exact same time. They would all be up to the minute, and the bell schedule would be on these clocks. And, you know, getting into this century, you know, if the power goes out, nothing gets erased. It just, the power comes on, and the alarms go off, and the spell schedules are removed.
I guess I have one question, if I may.
Sure.
You got $451,000 carry on, okay? So basically, you're saying you could have gotten by with a budget request of $451,000 left.
I felt bad.
I bet we hear new sound system too.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a good question, and that's, and, you know, that's kind of one of the reasons I was brought on a year ago. Had I known in November that our ADM was going to spike seven months out, hey, they're going to start dialing backs up, because we're going to have too much revenue. And we better start hiring people a lot faster, because I think we're going to have a lot. You see what I mean? And, you know, I think Dr. Sterling...
I do understand, but the second part of the question is this, I'm going to direct it to the city manager, she knows the numbers, so I don't know. For every one cent that residents of the City of Franklin pay, what does that equate to?
$55,000.
$55,000, for every one cent that people live in the city pay taxes to the City of Franklin. Just $55,000 divided by 451, divided by 51,000. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, all right? 8.5 cents. So that's 8 cents off the tax base for the people in the City of Franklin that paid taxes. It could have been calculated in different ways, just thinking off the cuff. If you'd used half of that, that would have been 4 cents less for the City of Franklin residents to have paid in taxes, even if we'd have done half of it. So my point is, as city council, we're always searching for the next penny that will be saved and kept and hidden to taxpayers with, because we don't want to be known for raising taxes. It's really simple. If that kind of money's laying around, unused, unneeded, that really attacks us as doing our job for the people we represent in the City of Franklin. That's the point I'm going to get across, some excess money each year, so to speak. And that, I say to my...
Thank you.
So, so what are we planning on doing about it?
What we do now is we, I actually re-project out on a monthly basis. I actually, I think I completely closed the loop, where it was like, I'm projecting salaries and benefits, I think it's expensive salaries and benefits, and then the chunk is other stuff that just comes up and you write checks for, but I'm projecting that stuff out with every hair. I re-evaluate, because my, my sights are on June 30th. It's always on June 30th, because we can't spend in the deficit, we just, we can't do that. So I'm trying to get as close to zero as possible. And, and so we're doing, we're doing the best we can under the circumstances, and I have every confidence that, I mean, I've already given Dr. Sterling and Dr. Halloran a projection of where I think we're going to go next year, and they actually changed their hiring just last week, and they said they, they never had that information before, like, January, February. So we're way ahead in the curve this year.
Okay, initially it's 451, actually it was 3 something, 300,000. The total rollover request now is 451,000. Last year's rollover was 300 and something.
335,000.
335,000. What I'm getting to, and I can appreciate what my colleague said in the sense that, if this was a one-time thing, I understand that it can happen. But it seems like to me that almost every year, there's rollover money requested to go back to the budget. Now my question is, using very simple figures, if it takes $100 to operate the schools, and you have a $50 rollover, all you should be requesting from the city is $50,000, exactly. We should need $100,000 to operate the schools. You've got $50,000 rollover, all you need is $50,000, instead of asking us for $100,000, and well, the other money was already ours, so can't we put that back? That's, I think, part of where the differential is coming in. And also, the architect fees for bathroom replacement cannot start without the drawings and permits. You said, I thought I heard you say you're putting out RFPs, that. How can you project such a fee for drawings and permits, when you haven't even done the RFPs yet? I mean, and if there is such thing as, I like those companies, so I'm going to pick from the top three companies. I think procurement says you have to go and give an opportunity to the rollover brands.
Yes, absolutely. Over $100,000 in Virginia, you have to have three, it has to be put out to bid, and you have to have a minimum of three bidders. And this is, this is my best estimate, it was my best estimate of what I think the architect fees might cost. And you're right, it hasn't been put out to RFP. Actually, the alarm system, because it's three schools, that has to be put out to RFP, I mean, three bidders on that.
So actually, the total, and if I'm understanding correctly, that your 451 is a combination of 45 on 50, and a 65?
And a 91.
And a 91, okay. You're projecting to need 400 or request $451,000, when you don't even know where exactly you want to be, because you have the RFPs.
Right, that's, that's what we do at the first joint session of the year, and then as the months go by, and if we have an indication that we're going to receive the money and we put this up, RFP, and then when we have our joint, our second joint session, we come in with exact numbers.
Okay.
So what you're saying, this is just speculation?
Estimation. It's our best estimate.
Thank you, both questions were very good, I appreciate them. But when we're doing estimations, I want the council to see, to try to see through the lens of the school system, because we are a division of moving parts. And we know the stigma that we have to make certain that we do not misappropriate or go over the budget. So there are years, like last year and this year, where even though we're projecting to spend all the way down to the penny, we intentionally hold back to make certain that we end up in the black, because we do not want to end up in the red. We could have spent down to the penny for, let's just say, the architects and the bell replacements, but we would, we didn't know that our ADM was going to go up to 151 to add additional revenue that we did not foresee. We planned on a certain number, let's just say 998, but went to 1035, which gave us extra revenue. And one of the things that really does hurt our school system is because you have many school systems across the state of Virginia. I talked to my colleagues, I'm in region two. I'm one of the only ones that you all hold funds back. All the way into November, we have to wait for it, when we could have been planning on utilizing this rollover earlier in the year, and being able to spend it down appropriately. But when we have to wait all the way into the end of November, December, to get an approval from the city, that cuts our 12-month time down to almost five, because we're coming back in January, and in June, here we go again. So it's really important that we have these conversations, but we cannot spend close to the penny, because we have to make certain that we get a clean audit, and that is something that we don't want to disappoint ourselves, the board, or the city with overstanding. If we would have spent all of this, that would have been a problem. But if we would have been a penny over, we would have continued to carry that stigma, and we're not going to do that. And that's why we don't spend, like we do, like we really should. So we're asking the city in the upcoming year, if you don't wait all the way until November to give us funds, because we could have started the bell system back in August. We could have started the bell system back in September. We could have did the architect review way back in the summer. If we knew that the city was going to say yes, when they supplement, we, we would have used the same.
With all due respect, we can't do anything until we have the audit that tells us what this amount is. And that's been our, our practice and continues to be our practice. We need to be making sure of this because I realize we're in a new year and a new regime and all that. But we, we've been stung before. ADM can go down as quickly as it can go up. If it goes down, then who do you go to for funding? You come back to the city for funding, correct? We've had to do that. That's why we made a decision as a council that we were not going to release any of those funds until after the audit. It's the prudent thing for us to do and we will continue to do that.
And that is one of the reasons why we hold back. Because on August, excuse me, in March, if the ADM goes down, we have enough funding projected so we can come out in the black. That is why we do our fiscal management projected out. So right now, you're exactly right. So we're both playing this game of how much can we actually spend? I don't want anyone in this room to think that we do not need this funding. We desperately need this funding. If you walk out of this room right now or walk into any of our, uh, bathroom facilities, you would know this building needs support, all of our buildings do. So we have to piece together. So we're just doing this presentation to show our school community, our council, and our greater community that we are utilizing these funds to directly target upgrades and improvement and to support our overall academic programs and nothing else. Total transparency.
Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Dr. Sterling. Thank you, Mayor.
Maybe I'll just, did everybody hear me?
Yes.
I talked really loud.
There's that, there's that.
I did just put an audio system up there.
The only thing this slide shows is that like we have a mortgage and you make a payment. You make more, you know, principal payments, it saves you interest. And so, um, one of the, one of the components of the rollover funds is that we were going to, we have a, we have still ten years left on a lease of equipment that was put in in two thousand thirteen and fourteen. And so if we make, you know, additional payments on that, um, you know, and if we continue to do that every year for the next four years or so, we can shave about, you know, forty months off of a one-hundred-and-twenty-eight month lease that we're still obligated to pay. We can save us about, you know, eighty-one thousand dollars in interest. So that's where I got that ninety-one thousand dollar payment up there. Yeah. That, that is the, so that's the presentation on the rollover. Open to any, any more questions from anyone.
I don't really have a question, but I did want to make a statement. Um, I was sort of surprised at, you know, when you look at the instructional expenses and the amount that we spend on teachers and hiring. And I know that he said that there was, um, money's not spent because of the hiring shortage. But one thing that kind of hit me as well is that we had a population of teachers that had been around since I was in school, almost thirty years ago. And they're finally retiring. And when the salary scale with teachers, you've been around for a while, that's a much higher pay scale than an entry-level teacher who's coming in. So as these, um, tenured teachers have been around, are, are leaving the system, so are their higher salaries, which are attached to higher benefits and stuff. And we're replacing them with, you know, people who haven't been in teaching for so long. And, you know, that's a savings, I guess, um, to that respect as well. And I can certainly understand where the city is coming from as far as, um, like Mr. Macklemore, you were saying, you know, year after year, we have this rollover. But as Mayor Rabel said, it hasn't always been year after year. Prior to me, shortly prior to me, um, I think it was the other way around, where the school system hadn't been as physically responsible. And I think that, you know, maybe we're not as gun-shy as we were before, but we're trying to make sure that if the ADM goes down at the end of March, that we're not caught, you know, with our proverbial pants down, coming to the city going, hey, you know, we really thought that it was going to be this way, but it's not, you can help us. We want to make sure that we're not putting you all in a bind as well. And it's really kind of hard when the dates are fixed the way that they are. Um, and you only have that short period of time to make, you know, those adjustments.
And that's why we, when we have this meeting, we ask about ADM. I think you get your numbers typically the end of September, uh, your first, first go around. And then we ask, you know, what is your ADM? And the reason we want to know is because if it is trending up, which is a great thing. But let's, let's look at, look at ADM over the last five years. Well, you know, it's, it's like this. It's, it's not consistent. And that's why it's important for us to be able to see those numbers. And for y'all to understand them too, I mean, y'all need to understand them more than we do. So that we understand what's going on. And you talk about destruction, you know, and I realize destruction comes from, from all three buckets. The city and state and city. But the school system's taken one-point-four million dollars out of destruction in the last three years and reallocated it in other places. That gives pause at, you know, to your point, I don't, you know, that's a lot of money. Not, you know, then you have raises and bonuses. Where does that money come from? You know, that's, that's where we are. And we, we, we have to have some fiscal and fiduciary responsibility to the citizens to make sure that we're funding. And y'all think we just have this conversation with y'all? Come to our budget meeting. We have it with every one of our departments, whether it's large or small. This happens to be one of the largest expenditures that we have from, from city spending. And it's probably the most worthwhile, other than safety and res fire, rescue, and police. So, but there are three big buckets, right? And so we've got to be, be really, really smart about the dollars. Because as Bobby said here, you know, one penny, one penny of tax increase is fifty-five thousand. One penny of tax reduction is fifty-five thousand. Look around, we're all paying. Everyone who lives in the city of Franklin is paying. So, you know, we, we just, we all need to just be working together. And, and listen, I think, you know, Mr. Riley is probably giving one of the better presentations we've had about understanding everything that's going on. And I appreciate that, I really do. Because I think it gives us all what we need to see. Uh, but, you know, we don't need to, we don't, we don't want to be adversarial, but we want to treat y'all just like we treat any other department, okay? So if you, you know, there's nothing personal about this. It's just our responsibility as a, as a council to have some fiscal responsibility for people that are paying the taxes. And so that's, that's what we're all about. That's why we're asking these kind of questions. It's not that we're saying no, but we're just asking questions so we know what we're voting. I hope that helps a little.
And, and I will just say, I wholeheartedly understand exactly what you were saying and what Mr. Cuthledge said, Mr. Rabel. I look at this not just as a citizen, but I am a parent. I have kids in this divi, eight, well, a child now left in this division, one has graduated. And I want my children to be afforded the same level of education they can get anywhere else. I want Franklin to be where people want to put their kids. Because if we have those families in this community, that's tax base. Because we all know and we are all aware that those people in my age bracket and younger are where our tax base is coming from. Because they're the ones that are going to be spending the money. They're going to be buying the houses, they're going to be buying the cars that lead to personal property taxes. They're not as conservative in their spending as we would be when we get beyond my age. Well, actually, in my age bracket, I'm getting there. But we know that, I know that, because I can speak to it from a personal level. When people are going to locality and they want to come here, what are they going to look at? They're going to look at the schools. And where can I, am I going to put my kids in those schools?
Exactly.
So we have to be able to provide that education that they are looking for, for their children. Has it been that way in the last, maybe five, ten years ago? No, it wasn't there. Are we moving in that direction now? Yes, we are. I mean, I have a child right now, given the opportunity. And we had this conversation when I came on the board. At that point, I had a child that chose to go to Athletics Regional Governor's School over staying in Franklin. And it was because her focus was the arts. That's what she wanted to do. Now I have a child in that same boat that is very focused on arts, but loves computers. And that child was given the opportunity to go to Athletics Regional Governor's School for this year. And what did she decide? She thought the opportunity was better for her to stay in Franklin. That speaks volumes for the direction that our school division is moving in. And we have to keep pushing it forward. How do we do that? Part of that comes into salaries, which were mentioned, and benefits. You know, I, if we're paying, we're paying eight thousand dollars a year less than Suffolk. I understand we can't compete with the Suffolk. But that's, some of those schools are only ten, fifteen minutes up the road. If I can drive ten, fifteen more minutes and get eight to ten thousand dollars a year as a teacher, what am I going to do? I mean, seriously. We're competing with that. Bus drivers, that is everywhere. We even now have the academy looking for bus drivers. They can't keep bus drivers because the hours and pay aren't there. How do we do that? How, because if we can't get the kids to school, what are we going to do? So all of that is a trickle-down effect and it all comes in. And we do, we do have that struggle of with the rollover not coming into play and knowing if we can spend that or allocate for spending that until December or January. You know, that's, that's a rapid adjustment to come back and figure out and put those motions in place to be able to do that. And it was just a couple of years ago where we worked back at city council saying, we had a little bit of a struggle and we've got to have money. And we've, we've corrected, we've put people in place and we've put processes in place. And I'll tell you as the chair, that is one thing that I will not have our board put back in that position again. So that, you know, all of those things we are, we are looking at, not just, it is not to spend money to spend money. It's to make the educational system within this city premiere so that people will move here, people will be here, people will put their kids back in this school. Because if we do have more kids in the school division and our ADM goes up, there goes our state funding going up, which gives us more money that we don't have to ask council to put as much into the school division.
I think that leads us to a larger conversation that I haven't had the opportunity to talk to you about. We've got three buildings in this city that's going on fifty years old. We have three, three physical plants that we're trying to maintain to educate a thousand children. At some point in time, we've got to change our philosophy to how we're going to go forward. Do we need three physical centers? Or do we need one, to build one new school for all of our children? We've got, we've got to think forward in this process a little bit. If we don't, we're going to end up with sixty, seventy-year-old buildings. And they're going to fall apart and you're not going to have that money that you have.
You know, one way to, one way to start addressing that is start taking this carryover we have and put it in a fund to build new schools. Because that's what we need to be doing. Well, this is, this, this discussion is no way an indictment on our educational process and what's going on. This is a discussion about findings, okay? And that's why...
And we're going to bring the people, just the, the people here that want to go to school here, as Amy just discussed, we're going to have to have larger facilities. We're the only community within, I can't even think of a county or a city within a hundred miles of it that don't have to be a facility.
You're going, also, you're going to want people to be able to afford to live here on a tax basis as well. So it's got to be done together on all departments and everything we've got for the whole city.
And I, and I think you guys realize, every year, I have, what is your projected carryover going to be come April, May, and June? And the reason I ask that question, and I, and I think we've said to you, do you spend that? Do you spend down as best you can based on what numbers you have? You, you should be able to project your ADM in, uh, in April and May. Should you?
No, it's moving parts, man, it's moving parts. But I will say this. Me, as a city, we should be applauded because we have a lot of students that are coming back to the division. And we are moving over, you know, closer to that eleven-hundred mark. And I actually see by twenty twenty-five, we should be at fourteen or fifteen. But Mr. Smith is right. A lot of parents are not bringing their kids to, uh, Franklin City Public Schools. They think it's an absolute wonder that we're having our programs and all of this. But when they can go to a modern facility and then they go into our facility where the bathrooms are all rusted over, we really have to be visionaries and partners on, in this work on what are we planning for twenty twenty-five when our kids walk into this building? Or even twenty thirty? I completely agree. You can't have a, a full secondary school from sixth grade to twelve. I'm going to put the babies in there, the elementary. But absolutely. No, 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 let me just finish. Are we saying have it done tomorrow? No. Are we saying let's get together and start the conversation? Absolutely.
All right, yeah. Of course. I've been here since you arrived.
Yeah.
Before then. Summer, I made Councilman Johnson make the mayor. This, you applauded what he said. All the presentations that you have made, not one time have you asked us about combining schools. Not once. I've been hearing that from people for a few years now. But tell me one presentation that you've given, when you've given your wish list or down the road, that the subject of combining the schools has been discussed. So I agree with Mr. Smith and with you also. But do not present it as if we've been asking y'all, come on, y'all, help us. We do everything that you ask us to do. And you know, I don't think you could say there's a, anybody on this council as more than Councilman Macklemore has ever voted against anything that you have. I'm, I've always voted the way that you would want me to vote.
Mr. Macklemore, Councilman Macklemore, I appreciate you saying that however there's a time and a place for everything. And when I walked into this division, we needed to get our academic program where it needed to be. We need to first get our discipline where it needed to be. We need to get programs where they needed to be. So now we're all looking through the same lens and moving in the same direction. So now as we begin, when you see this presentation, as we go to the end, you will see, now is the time for us to start having those conversations about new buildings. I mentioned this...
No, I'm talking about combining schools. Are we going to see that in the rest of the presentation?
However you want us approaching, combining schools, new buildings, rebuilding, it's not up to me. It's going to have to be collective. That means our community, our economic sector, our council, our, our school board, our parents. It's going to have to be a joint committee. I can only envision that everybody sitting at the table is going to come up with the final, which direction are we going to go in? And I look forward to that conversation.
As do we. And which, which one of...
As do we.
Which, which one of, of the assistant superintendents is charged, in charge of capital improvement?
I couldn't hear what it was.
Which, which assistant super is in charge of capital improvement?
Oh, that, the only one that handles our, our funding, operations and...
Well, one thing, Mr. Riley, this is your question, second question. Well, one thing, Mr. Ryder, this is your second year. We've been asking for CIP plan, CIP, which is a capital improvement plan for years. That's something that would really would have helped us get to this point where we could have started allocating, started putting aside funds for them.
I, I completely agree with you, and that, that was.
And that's not been asked, that's been asked for numerous occasions.
I, and I will, I will actually speak to that because when I came on the board back in the end of 17, beginning of, uh, end of 16, beginning of 17, um, of course, that was not a focus for me as a board member at that point because there were so many fires to be put out, extreme, immediately. Um, and about a year into that, so that would have been, actually late 18, I think it was, um, yeah, late 18. All of a sudden, because we were having these conversations about our facilities and looking at them. And it came up that the previous superintendent actually had schematics drawn up for an overhaul of, I think it was this building. It was us people, that's right.
It was Morton, it was, it was doing something with the project.
I'd never heard or seen any of that, even as a parent, having those conversations. Um, but nothing had ever been done with that. That was the, the, you know, something that, so then that started a conversation on, okay, well, what direction do we move in? But I will say, like Dr. Sterling said, at that point, as a board member, my focus was, we've got to get accredited. That's the very first step. We've got to come out from underneath this MOU. We have got to get accredited. What have we got to do to do that? And, and we put those systems in place. So we got that done. Now it's looking at how do we get parents to want their kids back here? So we've got to give them those options and opportunities from an educational standpoint that they want their kids here. So we, that's the overhaul in the curriculum that's been going on. And so now, actually, Dr. Sterling and I have been having those conversations probably for the last, probably six months.
I think in the last conversation we had, actually last week with our project team, I'm glad you said this, Mayor, we cannot develop a capital improvement plan without having an official commission or committee that has city council members sitting on it as well as school board members. Because if we start working in isolation, when we come to you to say, we need this, and you don't have any understanding, any backdrop or whatever. So I think this opens up a new day for us to actually stick together upon a team to say, okay, this is what you need. How do we project this for the next three to five years? Let's start checking off the boxes because remember, our funding comes from you. We can't raise taxes. I mean, we all know the process of referendum, school bonds, getting the voters to come out. We, 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 we all know there's other ways to try to get school approved and done. But why do that? When we can sit and really develop something jointly with our city? And that's really the vision that we're going to bring to you, that we sit down and jointly develop that plan.
As a school board member, and this is me speaking for me as a, as an individual, and it's not just a school board member, but as a member of the community as well, one of the things that I see is the two entities working together because not only do we need to be just making sure that our kids are getting a quality education, we also need to be finding ways to educate the children for what we need in our community, what we need as far as jobs within our community. So when we work together, looking at, we have, we have the ability to have that dialogue and say, okay, council member, what direction do you see the city moving in? What do you see as the needs within the community? What jobs are you trying to pull in, into the community? And what, um, sectors of business are you trying to pull in? Because then that helps us as we're looking at constructing those facilities as to what's the way to move in.
Clarity is very important, and I've been sitting here for quite a while. I'm seeking clarity between the two groups because if we do not work together, we're not going to accomplish anything. So let's get the elephant out of the room now and deal with the situation for our children and for our future. Because basically, we can go on and on, talk about what happened in the past, let's deal with the future. The future is now. Like Mr. Smith said, a, a new school, whether it's a large school, uh, it's, it, it, it's good. We need to build an educational process that will draw individuals back to the city. People will come with their families to live. Number two, economically, if we don't have a good school system, then you're not going to get jobs in the city. Companies are not going to come. They look at that. So basically, we can go on and on all night talking about what happened before. I don't care what happened before, I'm, I'm looking at now. We must work together now as a team. Uh, we can get with the school division. Uh, the city council needs to let the school division know what job workforce is needed. Uh, the different courses that, that it needs to build a job force. I've dealt with cities, I've dealt with 35 different cities with BML. What we're talking about is, is what everybody else is doing. But, but, but we have to work together as a team to get that accomplished. We have to stop harping on the past, deal with the future, and move forward. If, if not, this is a waste of time, and I don't like my time wasted. We need to work together as a team, move forward for the city of Franklin. It's not about, it's bigger than you and I, it's about our children. And if we're not willing to do that, we don't get here, none of us. So this back and forth stuff, I'm tired of it. We need to get together, work together. If we can't do that, then we don't need to be in the office that they're holding. We voted in to help our citizens. We have a, a right to do that. The school system and city council works together. Uh, work together, but it's, it's different. It's not going to be the same. They're with that BML, it's not going to be the same. Ever. But we have a fiscal responsibility, we have a responsibility to our children, to our citizens, taxpayers, to get it together, and now it's time to do it.
You can take your first comment and I'll.
Okay. So as I mentioned earlier, to, earlier tonight, this, this Frankel City School Division is a component unit of the city, and we need two or three times a year to agree on the amount of the appropriation of the city for the upcoming fiscal year. Just a couple of, you know, comments about the structure of the school division and city. You know, we are separate legal entities, um, yet, um, you know, our financials are included in the cities as a component unit and they're a cadre, and the city council, city council authority is to appoint both the school board members and to appropriate funds.
Jen, I just want to mention something real quick before we get into FY '22.
Okay.
Um, we can just talk about FY '21's budget. I know it was presented to council and was really basically no change. Um, there was really no, it was presented, um, and it was no change for COVID. You know, COVID hit March, March is April, and.
I'm done.
The.
You want to come to the microphone? This one's not the problem.
All right. So, um, the school system prepared a, a budget and presented it to city council, and then COVID hit. And the, of course, the city had its budget, and it was all ready to go, COVID hit. The city cut its budget, $1.1 million. The school had made no change to its budget. And at that time, you know, everything was just very crazy for the school system at that time, you know, so. And at that time, it was like, okay, we're going to revisit it. To date, we really haven't seen any decrease in the fiscal year '21 budget for the school. So my question is, before we get into FY '22, the question is, do you anticipate any savings in your fiscal year '21 budget that could perhaps, you know, just savings? Could be in your construction category, operation and maintenance, because we know, you know, the facilities are being utilized. Could be just, you know, anything, you know, the operational overhead cost, anything. We just, I mean, we know what we did at the city level. So that's the question. What savings are you anticipating in your FY '21 budget?
Um, yes, Tracy's correct. When we did the budget in March, we had not made a lot of changes between that version and the version that was eventually adopted. No matter how many times I called the state of Virginia, they could not give me an answer on what our revenue may be, how our revenue may be affected. My first thought was that our sales tax revenue was going to go down. Uh, and, and what we did do is even before I adopted the budget, I reduced the state revenue because I thought that the sales tax was going to go down. And sure enough, in August, we got a memo saying it's going to be a $67,000 reduction in our state revenue. Uh, so what we do though is we, on the fly, we just kind of like, all right, that's, that's one position we can't hire. So we have our meetings, we come out and it's like, all right, we're not going to hire that position because of sales tax. Now, how many, how many times did we do that through this year? Well, I mean, it did, it says it was a fluid situation and, and, uh, you know, well, we have, uh, you know, we're still paying our, our bus drivers, but we're not paying them to take, to do field trips. Um, the buses are not doing their route, so yeah, we probably have some fuel savings. Um, but I, I haven't actually put a pencil to that because I'm waiting to see what happens in February. February 1st is, prior to that, our, our board is going to decide whether we're going to open to, in, in school instruction now. We thought the transportation was actually going to skyrocket because we had two different schedules, morning and afternoon. Now the, the buses are going to be going twice as fast. So, um, so when, when the decision came down, well after the budget was adopted, that we're going to go virtual first half or semester. And then in February, we're going to reevaluate sometime, probably the second week of January, see where all the numbers are. Going to decide again. Well, then we, we pretty much have a pretty good idea of, of, of where the utilities, I think, are going to end up because it's probably the same as the prior six months, going to end up, and where the transportation costs might, might lie. Um, and, and where, where, where teachers or extras, personnel on the grants are paying for. And so, um, I, I really haven't, um, I haven't projected a, a lot of savings yet, but I, I will be after the December statements because my assistant Angie and I, she's our payroll person, and she is really helping me dial in these salaries and benefits, which I hope are going to be very, very close to where we end up. And, uh, so no, I, I haven't really put out to the board, I haven't, I haven't done my first projecting yet. Actually, presenting the financials through November at the December 17th board meeting. And I haven't, I haven't done my first projection yet because I did one once, and then Angie did something and she was so, we were so far off that like, I can't, I can't use either of these, so let's try this again. So we're going to get that nailed, we're going to get that nailed down. And probably after the December financials, we'll have a real good idea of what we'll do. And we'll have a lot better idea after we decide what happens after February.
So after December 31st, you know, you'll definitely know your six-month savings that you can give to council.
Yes, yes.
Can you make me a sample if I could, please? One of the things that's kind of frustrating with us, we still have a hiring freeze in the city of Franklin, I think. We have a hiring freeze for three police there. I think it's 10 or 12.
Well, we, on prison, police, fire, social services.
So we, we have multiple hiring freezes. We have not been able to hire people in civilian positions, uh, in some of our key positions in the city. Now I'm just thinking you have to hire the people who are fully qualified, that's what this is for. That's, that's one of the things we see. Another good example is, the whole design cost for the courthouse was $200,000. You're projecting $145,000 for veterans. There's just no correlation between the two. We, we're kind of like, we, we can't increase costs. We only have so much money in the city. So when we're short, when we come to a shortfall, we have to do one of two things. We have to stop spending money or raise taxes. Our taxes now are above the average from time to time. We can't raise taxes. So we've got to make some concessions somewhere, whether it be in some department. And you said you're a part of the city. It appears to me that pain should be somewhat equal. We should figure out how to, how to make that an equal position, a financial position for all of us.
Well, Mr. Smith, you know, you do ask, I hope you're realizing, you understand that the school division has been level funded for the past four years? Four years, it's just.
We've not been at level, but we've got kind of a freeze.
Yeah.
We're actually short of fire, rescue employees, and we, we don't have a bunch of time.
Let's just take the elementary school. Just, just to give some backstory, we have a classified reduction grant. If we don't hire, we lose that grant. Because you can't have over, uh, let's just say, 18 kids in a room. So we, we can't, we don't have that luxury of not hiring. We have to hire because the state's going to say, we're going to take away $300,000 or something like that. But you know you're supposed to have another teaching. The state gives you a cap on the number of kids that's supposed to be in a classroom. You go over that cap, you are outside of the statute. So you have to hire to make certain that your class sizes remain at a certain level. So we don't, we don't have that luxury of saying, we're having a hiring freeze unless Mr. Ryder says, we're at our limit, we can't, we have to ride this out. And nine times out of 10, he, he, he's on it. But our kids suffer if there's 25, 30, which it can't be, with that many kids in the classroom, so. And, and I want to say this because I have three, let's just say, uh, three assistant suits. One, you're not going to. The way I do things is I make certain that I can utilize grant funding as well as operations. Because I, I know I can't take three suits out of the operation. I would never do that. But I will take half and then supplement it with grants so I can have the people that we need to move this division forward. One of the things you will find out, and I hope you come, I want to invite you to our meetings, we are really fiscally savvy trying to make all these parts work for the betterment of Franklin. But it's not going to matter how much taxes we raise if we don't have citizens coming back to live in our, uh, community. And that's what we are here for. And I want you to hear from my mouth, Jeff, from, uh, our board. We're working to make something that you have a flagship school system so you can attract people to come to Franklin with the econ, you know, economic development, so they can say, I want to make a home here and I want to send my kids to the, to this school. That's all we're trying to do. We're not trying to make something that we grab all of the money. Because I remember when Tracy just said it, y'all making some cuts, this is the year before last. The city and I had a discussion and they graciously allowed us to be level funded. But when it was time to ask for the rollover, we all agreed, absolutely, give us 50,000 less or give us 60,000 left. But we know that you need this for the city, and we can work with this. So if we keep opening dialogues and not being two separate entities, but really work together, I think the rollover conversation and hiring freezes and all of that would be a lot, let, easier to digest. But remember, we are. But remember, we are willing participants to support.
You have to see that from our position. You have to see that from our position.
Okay, in here, buddy.
You have to see that from our position. You have to see that from our position.
Absolutely.
We have critical positions, and we build those positions of funding.
Absolutely.
Every, every department is important.
Absolutely.
So we can't try and arrest you. But I mean, something all the departments, you know, remember that.
Absolutely.
This is not a good time to actually respond to that.
And I want to say again, absolutely. And whatever we can do to support that doesn't take away from whoever we're trying to push the division in the city, we're all for it. If you were to say tomorrow, I would have to bring it to the board, we need 50,000, you can only get 350 out of the 400, what are we going to say? We need this much? No. If it's going to support fire and rescue, if it's going to support parks and rec, absolutely. But will we come back the next year and say, hey, we, we, we need to revisit this? We want you to be open to consider, hey, they worked with us this year, we have a little surplus, let's work with them, get them what they need. And that's the relationship we need to have. Absolutely.
Okay. And so just a little bit more about the structure. So the school division is a separate legal entity in Virginia, and specifically, but it is specifically dependent upon the city and the state. As you saw, $8 million of our revenue comes from the state and $500 from the city. These are the appropriate, and so the appropriations on the next slide, the appropriations actually provide the authority for spending. So that's why we have to, when we give you guys an accounting adjustment, that's an appropriation. So we have to have that, otherwise we're running illegal authorities to spend money. And then the next slide is just, there's two different ways that a city council or county can push money to a school division. It's either lump sum funding or categorical. And if it's categorical, then it's, you know, it's cap, if one of these things are capped, that requires an awful lot of accounting on both the city and the school division's side. So it's not a very popular way to run a school. So, you know, as Dr. Sterling is going to address some of the next slides up, you know, every one of the slides and the costs that we are acquiring support the goals that we're trying to achieve. And, you know, to raise the expectations, get epidemics, establish a continuous communication plan that involves everybody, continue to foster awareness conducive to student learning, kind of hard to do in pandemic over time, recruit, retain quality teachers and staff, which went a big step last year in doing that, getting the salary spent. And then ensure that our divisions are executed in a fiscally responsible manner. As we just saw from the fiscal 2020 statements, very responsible, both on the city and the state. And so when Dr. Sterling sends out the instructions for people to get heard the requests of what they want, they have to justify every expense. They can't just say, I want last year plus another five. Why did you need last year's and why do you need next year's? It's a very responsible way of creating logic. And so, and so those are the three fundamental sources. And so, and real quick, so what we did in 2021, in order to attract, you know, in our town with the people and try to hold them, we just tried to increase wages across a lot of our categories. I think this one would be in the teacher salary schedule, you know, power of South Hampton. And so, so because we did so much work on the salaries last year of the folks that we have working here, and new people, new hires coming in, this year we have almost, you know, we're only, you know, projecting about a 2% cost of living increase for all of the existing employees. No, no major changes in the compensation structure. So I'll take it to Dr. Sterling for the positions.
Thank you, Chad. All right, well, here we have it. Again, like Mr. Ryder said, I sent out a request for the budget, and then each department sends me back what they feel they need. And then I do a needs assessment of the entire division and see how can we bring it up to be functional. Three years ago, Franklin City Public Schools was really working with these skeleton proof. They had people doing five, six, seven, eight jobs, literally, and it was not being done to be best, a top efficiency at all. So we had to reorganize and restructure. I know you all know, and I'm not going to go into it, but I know each and every one of you know the programs that we bought and that we've created and initiated at Franklin City. Franklin City has been recognized for its academics, well, let's just focus on robotics nationally. But now it is actually being recognized next week for its STEM initiatives, starting with S.P. Morton and J.K. King. They will receive national recognition through Jason's Learning and our dual enrollment programs, which was something that I know the city council was concerned about, working with Kemp Community College. We still have our initiative in computer science and engineering with TCC, Tawar, the community college, because they were the only ones that had the degree pathway. And you all know by now that we are like blue partners with Virginia Tech. They have taken so many of our children, and they're still nurturing our children through summer programs, through virtual programs, and they have made a solid commitment to Franklin City Public Schools. So with that said, how do we keep these programs going? And how do we make certain that they are 100% top notch and stellar? We have an increase in students that are taking gifted. We have one gifted teacher, which is absolutely unheard of for three schools. We are asking for an additional in our budget, an additional gifted teacher, one just for the elementary and one for secondary. Again, our programs have increased. We just had, excuse me, we are in the midst of our advanced academic week. We are even doing it virtually, where our parents and our students are coming online. They are doing an overview of all of the programs, gifted and advanced academics. We had one targeting S.P. Morton. Last night was J.K. King in Franklin High School. And they are our parents that are here, and they are, they want their kids in these programs. We also reached out to over 30 with Dr. Carter. We also reached out to over 30 plus homeschool students. We sent them the flyer and the invitation to join us virtually so they can see what's happening at Franklin City Public Schools. Next, three teachers to achieve the ratio of 15 to 1. At this time, we discussed a hiring freeze, but we actually need more teachers to bring down the ratio, especially for grades three, four, and five, that can hold up to 24, 25 students. We are going into a post-pandemic, where our students have not been in school since March. Give or take three more months, that will be an entire year. It will be completely unfair to send a teacher back into a classroom when you have 20 or more students to teach when they have severe learning loss. We're going over socialization, and we have worked extremely hard to make certain that the discipline is at minimum levels, especially with our youngest learners at S.P. Morton. And council, you have not heard anything, and board members in the community, about S.P. Morton. And when I first came here, that was the hot topic, and it was discipline. Well, that has dwindled down to zero because of our PBIS initiatives, how we're working with our students, and how we're refocusing them on academics and high expectations. One truancy slash secretary officer that will work with our students that are out and about, unfortunately, in the community, that are not coming to school daily. We again have one truancy officer for the entire division. We need one dedicated to the elementary school and one dedicated to the secondary schools. J.K. Middle School, I don't know if you all know, but Mr. Parker has been holding it up over there alone. We need to restore the assistant principal at J.K. Middle School. That is one of the fastest growing schools, one of the fastest growing schools when it comes to enrollment. And I know why. He's getting kids from everywhere, and he's getting kids mostly from our neighboring division. Why? Because he offers over seven high school credits. Our neighboring division offers two. This is why we are starting to become an academic magnet at Franklin City, and we need teachers to support those programs. So you have your administrator, and you have two teachers that are requesting, one in math and one in science. Next year, we would like to offer a high school science course in environmental science. This year, we have over 40% of our students taking Algebra I and Geometry. They go, they come to Mr. Phelps already completing Algebra I, so they immediately go into Geometry, and he is close to 30 students coming over, and we're pushing them, pushing them, pushing them. If we had another teacher, we could do even more, that are moving from eighth grade, going right into Algebra II. Now, I want us to hear that. From eighth grade going into Algebra II in the fall, correct Travis? And then in the spring, they're going into pre-calculus. And this is Franklin City, and this is not just the queen of the crop. This is how we're pushing equity across the board. This is for all of our children, all of our children. Not just in gifted, not just in a certain demographics, but all of our children. We are proud of how we are making certain that equity remains in the forefront of Franklin City. So these positions are needed to support existing STEM programs at the middle school level. Projected for 21, 22 school year, over 55% of J.K. King students will take advanced math and science. This is why they're getting the national recognition courses for high school credit and college preparation and dual enrollment. We currently only have one teacher that is certified to teach geometry. She will not be able to teach close to 45 kids next year. That's too many on a caseload. We need another geometry teacher at the middle school. Franklin High School, we are asking for, we are proposing a dedicated registrar. He has not had a registrar in the history of Franklin City. So the counselor was doing the job of the registrar with all of the transcript artists. Our transcripts from the oldest member in here, whoever you are, I don't know, you don't have to recognize yourself, that have graduated from Franklin City, your transcript is still in paper mode. So I don't know if half your grades are there or not, because unfortunately, some of them could be water damaged or just rodents eating them. Your registrar puts everything on microfiche, parchment. Anytime you have an employer request, your registrar does that. They work with the clearinghouse for the NCAA. They do all of that when it comes to making certain that your data is in order. Since I've been here up until this year, that was all laid on one person, and that was A.L. Massenberg. And that is way too much for one counselor to have to handle all of those duties, plus scholarships, plus counseling, plus testing. Way too much. Dean of Students. We would love to have an SRO, but we have asked for an SRO in the past, and it's extremely hard to get one. We were very pleased that Ms. Jerick and Chief Patterson came to us last year. They won the grant, and we were approved, and we were very thankful for that. And then COVID hit. So we have not had that SRO, but we want to thank the city for their efforts of working with us because they know we need an SRO. But if we do not have an SRO, we cannot have high school young adults come back into this building that have not seen each other for over a year, and it's just Travis doing discipline. That cannot happen. We're setting our principals up for a very dangerous environment. He needs support, either an additional assistant principal or a dean of students that will take the place of an SRO that will work primarily with discipline. When I came here, this was one of the best-run schools as far as discipline and respect that I've ever been to. And I had been a principal on the South Side of Chicago, and I had 1,800 students. And I have never seen a building brand as tight, even my building, I had 1,800, but I have never seen a building burn as tight as the ship that Travis, Mr. Phelps, excuse me, has. But now his back will be up against a wall, and we don't want that. And I know I definitely don't want that for him. So we're asking for a dean of students to support the work that he's doing at the high school, along with his assistant principal, who primarily focuses on academics. His academics is changing as well at Franklin High School. And again, as visionaries, we have to change with him. Travis houses in Early College in his building. So you have Franklin High School, then you have Vanguard Early College. And under that umbrella of Vanguard Early College, we're working with Tawar Community College as well as Kemp Community College. Travis needs an addition, Mr. Phelps, I do apologize, I act like I'm a graduate. Needs an additional math teacher to teach higher level academics, and one English teacher. One English teacher that we are feverishly trying to find to teach advanced academics and dual enrollment. That is the last teacher that we need to hire to have a full-fledged Early College. That means over 60% of his sixth, excuse me, 11th and 12th graders will be taking college courses. Over 60%. In the next two years, you will not have a child walking across the stage with just a high school diploma. Every single student in Franklin High School, even our students with special needs, will have some form of collegiate credit. That is, that is a magnet for people to come and live in Franklin City. One part-time athletic director at $26,000. We have one athletic director who receives a stipend, and he oversees over 18 sports. That's filing, going via SL, all, everything that that sport entails with rules and regulations and schedules. This community values its sports program. Friday night, you don't even have to attend Franklin, but you have people from all over coming to see Franklin City Public Schools play. They value athletics, from football to basketball, to track, everything. We need somebody that can organize sports in this city, in our community. And last but not least, this is an overall of the teachers, but then I'm going to get down to other. Yes, it had, we have talked about a new building, and it is something that I have been researching feverishly for the last year and a half. And again, I like to do my research, and I don't want to bring anything to the council because like I proposed earlier, I think it's something that we need to do jointly when it comes to a school. However, the conversation has to be on the table. Because when you look at refurbishing our bathrooms, it's going to take over $2.3 million to refurbish our bathrooms. That is a lot, especially when a new school or a secondary school, 612, is approximately $17,000 to $20,000, $20 million, depending on how many multipurpose facilities that you want. And I think that our new school, and this is just being brought out there, should have multipurpose facilities that should not just be for our school's needs, but for our Should have multipurpose facilities that should not just be for our school's needs, but for our community's use as well. And 50 and 5% increase always, we bring that to the council for insurance increase every year. Now before we go to the next picture, I'm sure you've already seen it, but we're going to go to the next picture. If you look in your books, you can see more clearly, this is, these are the facilities that our children use every day. Completely unacceptable. Completely unacceptable. And our goal as a board is to come together and have all of these facilities touchless. Coming back in from COVID, that's one thing you don't want to have is toilets that you have to flush. Physically with your hands or with your feet. Or you're using a one spout sink that is corroded with rust. Unacceptable. And it is not just at the high school where we get a high influx of flu, colds. And all kinds of things going on at the elementary school. Because a lot of times, they don't really wash their hands, but they touch everything. Our goal is to have a touchless laboratory facility for our children that they deserve. I'm speaking as a superintendent. But I don't know if you all know or not, but I send my children to Franklin City Public Schools. I have to. And they know how to use the bathroom, unfortunately. So this is, this is a recommendation that we had that I hope sparks a conversation at this time. Oh, thank you for saying that. Some of it does. And we asked for over $800,000 to try to pay for this so the city wouldn't have to support this with capital improvement. And they kicked it back. They did not pay for it. They gave us a very small percentage. And we're holding that. We're definitely holding it and it is earmarked touchless in our CARES Act, touchless bathroom. So we're holding that money because we have to add to it.
Four years ago, I believe, four years or five years ago, they redid all the bathrooms in Portland. Man, I've done a very good job.
Who changed the bathroom?
That was before I came there, because you know, I hunted down.
Yeah, I don't, that I recall, and I had kids in that school at that point. None of the fixtures were replaced. They redid some tiling. So it was, it was visual, but as far as...
All I know is they did some of the...
Well, I thank you for the backstory because I didn't know that.
I hesitate to give any backstory anymore, but sometimes we need to know where we've been.
Right, right, I appreciate that. I didn't know that.
Excuse me, I don't think they did the bathrooms, that was some tile that they did and some of them, some tiling.
Is it just the tile?
Basically, it was some tile.
Okay. I knew that there was something there, but I wasn't sure what.
All right, we can go to the next slide. Right there, all right. So this gives you the breakdown of how we came with this cost. Elementary school, 33 bathrooms, 24 at the middle, 22 at the high school, which is 79 bathrooms altogether. Gives you the square footage, 119 toilets, 29 bathrooms. It just gives you the entire breakdown. So when you go back, you just look at it for yourself as well. In order to determine at least a rough estimate, we asked and then we used in the past to give us an estimate of how much this project may cost. And that's why Mr. Macklemore asked, like, how did you get this number? Well, when you start, you have to have rough estimates. So we did get someone to come and walk every single bathroom. And from the rough estimate, it would be 1 million at the high school alone. S.P. Morton at 700 and J.P. King at 5. So that leaves us with J.P. King, ones that we are starting to really look at because of the CARES funding. I think we could chip off about 100,000 of that, but that's all we have. But then we realized we couldn't even chip off 100,000 because we had to get the architects. We couldn't even start the project. So that's where we are with our needs assessment and proposal. The next time we meet, even if we're not going to meet, I'm going to soon, I'll send you the survey results. Because we did do a survey. And we got a lot of community feedback as well. And three new schools was on the survey. Because I don't want to do anything without getting the pulse of our community. And just to be completely transparent, when we get these results, the majority said, yes, absolutely, we need new schools. But then there was a high percentage that said they don't want to raise taxes. Be honest, let us work with something. We were okay with that, so we'll make certain that we provide you with that survey as well. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions? It's usually in the spring.
Anybody on council have any questions? Again, thank y'all for the presentation, thank you for the interaction, thank y'all, everybody for coming. I will entertain a motion for council to adjourn our party's meeting.
If you all have any questions, in the end, I'll make certain that you have access to my email address as well as Mr. Ryder. And you can review the presentation, you can email us at any time. More than happy to answer any questions. And even if you want to sit and have a one-on-one meeting with us, please reach out. We are more than happy to accommodate you. Stay here. Ms. Phelps, you want to say?
I'm going to adjourn my group, I've got a motion. Are we, all those in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Anything? We stand adjourned, y'all are welcome, and turn it over to the school board.
Well, I will then for school division, if there's no questions or any discussion, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. I have motion in a second, any discussion? All those that have signed up by saying aye, for today's instructions, have the same opportunity.
Aye.
Aye.